Here, council study session, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two, six P M. City Council Chambers, one-one-one East Maple. And Mr. City Manager, go ahead and start us off on this.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At your regular meeting last week, one of the items was held over at the request of the council to have a study session this evening before reappearing on your next agenda regarding the electric utility service policy. Deputy Director of Independence Power and Light, Joe Heggenduffer, is here to give you a little more detail on staff's proposed recommendation.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm Joe Heggenduffer, the Deputy Director of Independence Power and Light. So, at their request, yeah, we'll cover the IPL service policy changes. I know it was kind of daunting. There's a lot of pages in there. There was a lot of verbiage that was changed over. So, probably a good idea to just go ahead and cover those changes from a high level. And then if you guys have any questions in the specifics or want to dig into the policy, I will try to answer them the best I can. I also brought my planning supervisor with me to, who was instrumental in helping make a lot of these changes, so I can definitely phone a friend if I need to at that point. So, the last time this policy was changed was two thousand and eighteen. Of course, we've got a lot of new employees, myself, Mr. Jerry Borland as well, looking over these policies, hey, do these make sense? What's the industry practices? And we thought it was best to revisit this policy at that time and institute some changes that are a little more even with the industry. So, number one, the big change, and this one instituted a lot of changes through a lot of pages. So, instead of us calling out all the specs throughout the policy over and over again, we're going to reference the NEC or the National Electric Code and the National Electric Safety Code. This way, that policy and those guidelines change throughout time, off and on, and this gives us a chance that whenever those change, we aren't automatically out of compliance with the NEC or NESC. And any contractor in town that's following those codes should be aware when those changes come out and allow us to just stay in compliance with that. It also helps cleaner language in our service policy, instead of, like I said, specking out all those different things.
How often do those organizations make changes?
Three to four years they make changes. And sometimes they're very minute and may not affect this policy at all. And sometimes there are huge revamps of the policy, so. The second change is in concern with meter sockets. So, IPL used to provide meter sockets for all new installations on houses and commercial. That's a lot of cost. And, to be honest, the meter sockets alone incurred IPL costs of up to around thirty-five thousand dollars yearly. So, instead of us continually providing those, we're going to make the change that the customer is going to be responsible for furnishing and installing those IPL-approved sockets.
How many, how many sockets are we talking about for thirty-five thousand?
Annually.
How many?
Three hundred and ninety-two last year. That's why he's here. Give me those answers real quick.
Does he have a breakdown of cost, or do I need to do the math?
A breakdown of cost of what? So.
Individual socket.
The individual sockets range on price.
Right.
They can go from a hundred dollars up to six hundred dollars, depending upon if it's a commercial or.
How about residential?
Residential one, on average, I don't know. Around sixty-three dollars apiece for a residential one.
And who, who, I'm sorry. Who are we buying the bulk of our, our meter sockets from?
They're available at a lot of different electrical warehouses around town. I don't know specifically who we buy.
Do you know who the manufacturer is?
No. Because they're, they're pretty generic and they're pretty, they're available.
Well, we have a large manufacturer here in Kansas City, Millbank. Do we buy the bulk of them? Millbank, okay.
So, we've already discussed these changes with a lot of the contractors and the vendor warehouses that we use, and their biggest comment was, we're surprised you haven't changed this yet, because all of the electrical utilities around us, this is pretty standard practice, that they don't provide it anymore. This way, I guess you could say that development pays for development, instead of spreading the cost through all the rate payers.
What's a rate payer, if he has to provide his own? What, what's he going to find the price going to be? Is he going to buy it at Home Depot? Is he going to buy it low? Is he going to go to a specific warehouse? I mean, what's the cost going to be in comparison to what we provide to the rate payer?
You want to come up, Jerry? I'll just have him sit here. That's okay.
They'll probably end up paying the sales tax on top of the value. And I do know from some other places that they were end up paying like seventy-five to eighty bucks per each one of them.
So, our rate payers are going to pay more to provide what we used to provide for them at a better cost?
No, not the rate payer, the person actually doing the work.
So, the contractors?
Yes.
So, the contractors should benefit from our being able to buy a volume. Now, they're buying on their own, whatever their pricing is, and they pass it on to the customer.
That'd be correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
Sorry.
It's okay. That's why we're here, right? To clarify all these questions and get them out. It's okay. You wait? Okay. Number three moves on to temporary service facilities. So, when there's a temporary service hookup out at a construction site, IPL used to provide those. A lot of times, we would get a phone call, hey, we ran over that, and we would come back and provide the replacement for free. This is going to change from us providing it to, again, contractors providing those through construction phases.
Can I ask another question on that?
Certainly.
So, because the third district does have new home construction going on, I know builders have to call, get a spot location. Who pays for that? I mean, you're charging to come out and do a spot location, correct?
I don't think we have in the past, no. No, and we're not going to.
So, we're not charging for that?
We're not charging for that service, no.
Okay.
This is purely for the actual devices themselves, the temporary metering hookup.
So, spot locations are free? There's no charge for any of that?
Correct.
Is that going to?
Are you, you're talking about actually, this is where it needs to be located?
Well, it could be new home construction, or if customers are moving their current blocks, or if their service, you know, changes. God forbid, there's an accident, something that happens, is there a spot location fee that's charged ever?
No.
Okay.
So, along with these changes, we are working with the communications department as well, so that it's not just a change, and when the contractor comes, they find out. So, we want to push out communication, probably both through mail, email, and then also have information when people come up for, to get a permit. So, when a contractor comes to pull a permit for electrical, they have this information available to them as well. Number four is a overhead requirement. So, there's always been a, at the director's discretion, the ability to waive the overhead requirement. So, this just kind of clarifies that a little bit to allow us to make some sound decisions. So, some examples are, if somebody's relocating a meter on their house, in the past, we would require them to immediately go underground. Well, let's say there's no trees in their background, in their, in their backyard, and they have to go through a hundred feet of rock from the pole. Well, that doesn't make sense to force them to pay that to go underground, if it's not going to be any jeopardy to our reliability or our service. So, it just allows us to continue to make sound decisions for both the customers and for IPL. That requirement's always been there. This is just kind of clarifying that a little bit. Yes, sir. The requirement to go underground, I would have to look that up, sir. It was, it was a few. The complaints answer is yes, because we blindly would require people to go underground, whether it made sense or not, there for a while. And so, under Jim Nail, he's been looking at that, and with, and the current policy gives him discretion to say, hey, we'll allow this to remain above ground, or for that installation to remain above ground. Because, again, if your whole neighborhood's above ground, and your service, you're moving your service requirement, there's an accident or something happens, it doesn't make sense to force that person to pay a bunch of money to, to underground, when everybody else is above ground.
So, IPL pays for the trenching to move it underground?
No. No. That's always been a charge to the customer. And that's why it's an expensive endeavor to go from above ground to underground, or it could be, depending upon how far the service entrance is from, from the pole attachment.
Wasn't at one point, wasn't there a program in place where we provided incentive to go underground, or we helped go underground, or something to that effect?
Yes, we did, but behind that was tied some, I'm sorry. Yes, we did, but behind that was tied some FEMA monies that allowed us to offset those costs. Well, that money's gone away years ago, and so, we put actually a hold on it until we figured out what the actual costs are. We were told, and we were just talking with some electric contractors, right now, they're charging about fifty-five to sixty dollars a running foot to bore somebody's yard. So, we put in about a hundred feet, that's over six thousand dollars, just to put a bore in, no wire, nothing else. So, this is the reason why we wanted to review this, because it's the cost that were coming to these people, it's getting to be rather high.
I'll get those answers to you, sir.
Just to follow up on that question, was there ever any grant money? I mean, we, do we have a full-time grant rider at IPL?
No, sir.
At one time, I think we did, and there was grant money that came in. Did that help offset some of the costs of the rate payers on these things?
It, it did, as he was talking, the FEMA money that came through.
But we don't have an active grant rider.
We don't have an active grant rider on staff right now.
Do we have plans to obtain one?
Not that I'm aware of, but I know there are grants that are being looked at citywide, and IPL is a part of those discussions, especially with a lot of the stuff that's been passed lately, through the infrastructure bills.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of money that's come in from the infrastructure bills, as well as there's money out there that we should be looking for.
Mr. Mayor. We are using a company called GrantScribe that's helping track and monitor all the different grant funds out there and apply to be competitive for those.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last and final was just kind of a overall administrative cleanup of, of the procedure. So, looking at language, verbiage, general administration of page numbers, table of contents, and making sure that page numbers and the table of contents matched where things were. That's really the big overall. I know it's thirty-five pages, and, like I said, there was a lot. If you looked at the audited version, there's a lot of lines and a lot of things crossed out, and it was kind of hard to follow. But from a high level, that's really the major changes to this policy. So, barring any other questions, I know that Mr. Stewart may be, Councilmember Stewart had a few.
I have one question. All the other ones were answered. So, you said it was a thirty-five thousand dollars that we pay for these meter sockets? Is that right?
For the sockets, yes, sir.
So, we don't charge that back somehow to the customer?
No, sir.
It's just a straight-out loss of thirty-five thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and that's the same story with the temporary meter installations as well. So, again, if we, right now, today, we go install a temporary meter connection at a construction site for a new neighborhood, and they call us three days later, and, oh, our drywall guy backed over it, we go out and we replace it for free at cost to IPL. So, the other thought behind that is, if the contractors are supplying that, there's going to be a little more care to take care of that stuff as well. Now, we'll come and, and inspect and make sure it's safely hooked up and energize it, which is part of our continued service. But as far as providing the actual hardware, we'd like to change that.
Okay, thank you.
Are all the meter sockets the same, like the holes in the back that drill into the house? I mean, is there going to be some sockets, meter socket boxes that are different than, like the standard Millbank, like what we're used to buying?
There's been different ones through time. I know that we're going to provide a list of actual catalog numbers and ones that will be acceptable for installation with this change.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm reading through, I read through, this is pretty, this is a lot. I mean, this is, with, with everything in this document, it's like forty-five pages that, that's covered pages and all that. And I was looking through it, and, and I, I was curious, I'm the, I have a residence, I put the meter socket on there, and, and you come out and put the actual meter on the box.
Yes.
Do you own it at that point? Because I can't, I can't break the seal, I can't take it off. If there's something goes wrong, who owns that?
Who owns the meter socket?
Yeah, well, you put a meter on it, and if I own the box, and you put the meter on it, but I can't break the seal, I can't do anything to it, does IPL own it, or does the resident own it?
Well, the resident owns it even today, when I, when I go and deliver it and it gets installed.
Right.
That's part of the resident's house.
But I can't touch it, once that meter's in there, that's it.
That is correct.
I mean, like, if there's, there's adapters for, like, a, a home generator, if you want to run a home generator out there, and you could, you can put a sleeve on it, I can't break that, I can't do, I can't break that seal.
Correct.
So, my question is, does IPL own that whole component, or, or do I still own the box, you still own the meter, but I can't do anything with it? So, something internally fails. IPL own that, or?
Okay, so if the meter socket fails, you're saying, then that would be on the owner, because the owner owns that portion.
Okay.
We own the meter.
Okay. Because I asked that question to a couple PUAB members who, who, now, they, both of them said they were pretty confused reading through it.
Okay.
They only got like seventy-two hours to review it, which isn't a lot of time. I'm wondering if, if there was, be a way to let them come back, since they represent rate payers, and, and a lot of this, I mean, I'm a rate payer, and I, and PUAB's there to represent my best interest. I'm wondering if there's a way that maybe we could go back to them and let them review it, ask questions that, that pertain to rate payers, and where there's confusion, that, that you could help them understand that better.
I, I probably am not the person to make that decision, if that's the wish of the council.
I'm saying that to my colleagues, I'm hoping that that would happen.
Okay.
Because they didn't feel like they had a good understanding of it, and if you all would be available to, because IPL is there to serve us as rate payers.
We're always available to answer questions, sir.
And, and they should, they, they should get more than, especially on a large document that's, there's a lot of industry language that's not rate payer language. And if they have questions, that they should be able to get good answers for the rate payers, I think they should. Because I don't want to lower standards. I, I want to make sure our standards are high.
We don't either.
And, and some of these.
None of this is going to lower service at all.
Well, you know, we're, we're taking thirty-five thousand, did we budget for that this year, the cans?
Yes, because it's currently.
But we're not going to use the thirty-five thousand to buy cans, or do we have those, those meter boxes this year?
I, I am sure we have some in stock, but I have no clue how many that we currently have in stock.
I was just curious if we went ahead and did the thirty-five thousand in this year's budget for those.
Yes, it's currently, it's currently in the budget.
So, are we going to buy those cans with that, that budget money?
Not if the policy changes.
Well, but that's what I'm asking, if, if it's in the budget this year, so does policy change go into next year?
That's another discussion topic, would be when this policy would go into effect.
Okay.
And it's, I do not see it like a light switch, that as soon as it's approved and signed, that it would go into effect, and we're no longer providing those things. We would need to communicate a timeline as well, that would need to be agreed to.
And, and that's, so if we're, if, if this year's budget, because we're in this year's budget now, we're in a new budget year. So, is the thirty-five thousand, Mr. Walker, do you know the answer to this? Is there thirty-five thousand set aside for the, the meter sockets?
I, I don't have that line item committed to memory.
Okay, that's fine. If we could find that out, that would be helpful. And are we going to actually use thirty-five thousand for the purchase of the meter sockets this year, and go and have all this change over into next year? Because I, I don't know how many, do you know how many meter sockets we have available in the warehouse today?
No, sir.
All right. Well, if, if it's in the budget this year, and I would like to see us continue to do that for the residents this year, and then maybe we make that change next year, and we just eliminate that, that line item out of the budget, if, if possible. That makes sense?
If I'm hearing you correctly, Councilmember, what you're asking them to do is withdraw their recommendation to have customers buy this, and having the city continuing to pay for it for this budget year, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Well, we approved that budget, Mr. Mayor, and, and if that's in the budget, then I think that's something that we should provide through this year at least, and then make the change next year.
Right. My question was just only for clarification.
Yes, and that's fine. That's, that's what I was doing.
Any further questions? Any further questions? Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the electric service policy update. Next thing we have, boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager, could you run us through that process, please?
Actually, sir, if it's okay, I'll defer to the city clerk.
Okay.
And then, I think there's a few things we'll work back and forth on here.
Perfect, thank you.
So, we've had some discussions here recently about merging and dissolving various boards and commissions. So, the first recommendation is merging three of the oversight committees, the Stormwater Control Oversight Committee, Street Improvement Oversight Committee, and Public Safety Tax Committee. Merging those into one super committee, if you will, that would take a look over those three, I guess, four, sales tax and use tax funds. If there's no objections, we have attached an example or a draft to the agenda, so if you've taken a look at that, that would be the proposed language for the next meeting.
I, I did look at that language, and a question comes to mind, and that is, I was noticing that, well, I guess, if either you or City Manager, whoever wants to address this, maybe the City Manager, just review for me the appointing process, the process we go through to appoint board members, and, and how that kind of, the history behind that, and how that's worked over the years. And I think I know what we're doing now, but I kind of want a bigger picture.
Yeah, you, you want?
Currently, these are appointed by individual council appointment. Each of these committees has seven seats, so it's an individual council appointment. The recommended super committee, if you will, the local, I think we called it the local tax oversight committee. That would also have seven individual council appointments. It would follow the same, the same line of thinking there.
Okay. Have we always appointed, you know, things of that way?
The, as far as any of the sales tax committees have been this way, there's several charter committees. The Public Utility Advisory Board and the Planning Commission immediately come to mind. In my tenure with the city, that's varied, how those were filled out. Up until very recently, though, those were done by the body as a whole. But about a year ago, those, the council voted to change that process to individual appointments, created a lottery system, assigning each of the seven appointments to each of the seven members of the body, and now we're handling those as individual appointments, as kind of has been done with these sales tax committees. There was a, I'm, I'm going off of memory here, Madam City Clerk, but there was a council interview committee that would take applications, that would review those, do interviews, and then make a recommendation to the body about who to appoint into those, those charter-created groups.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Question on the, on just the language of these different sales tax, I guess it would be referendums, or whatever the voters voted on. Is there specific language, that there's supposed to be specific oversight for that, for the monies collected in that? And if not, I, I mean, I would like to see that, the way they were written, and, and to ensure that, I've got, I had several calls on this today, that there, people are concerned that we're getting a little too centralized in our oversight, that these tax issues that we, they've passed, and the precious tax dollars that they've entrusted us with, need to have civilian oversight. That's part of it. And I think that, I, I stand with that. I think that the more oversight we have with tax dollars, the better we are in terms of accountability and ethics for the way that we handle our business here. So, the ordinances that we, that we've passed, I think, have specific language to, to oversight committees, and I want to be real cautious in trying to centralize it down into one oversight group.
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney prepared a memo back on July twenty-first that I sent to the council on July twenty-second, and I'm going to read from that. There is nothing in the city charter or otherwise that would prevent the city council from combining these oversight committees into one. My recommendation is to officially dissolve and/or combine through an ordinance and vote by the city council.
I would just, I would just add that our city attorney doesn't represent districts, and when people are concerned about oversight, that we need to lend an ear to them. And I think for me, I think if we're going to err on any side, we're going to err on the side of taxpayers. And so, giving, allowing for committees to give specific oversight for particular tax issues is, is a wise thing. That's all I.
So, am I correct in understanding that this doesn't decrease the oversight at all? This just combines the committees, so that there's one committee instead of three committees?
Correct. And as, this city clerk could better state than I, but, you know, each of these committees having seven individual members on, on those, for these three committees, you're talking about trying to find twenty-one citizens to fill those out, it gets very difficult. Sometimes we have committees that are unable to meet for lack of a quorum. We also hear from some of the committees that, you know, these departments coordinate a lot together, so kind of seeing the larger macro picture, instead of looking at it at the granular level, would be helpful to get a better sense of how these funds are being spent.
Right. So, I, I mean, that's what my understanding, the way I read this, was that it would create, hopefully create some efficiency in the, in the corp, I mean, in the committee structure. I mean, I know when I was on the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee, there were a number of times that we only had, you know, the minimum number of people to, to have a quorum, to have a committee meeting. And, and, and for quite some time, we had vacancies on the committee. And so, you know, when you take twenty-one down to seven, that, that helps that process at least to a degree, so. Okay, thank you.
I, I don't know, I don't like the idea of combining them. In these meetings, you have a lot of, you know, city personnel, you have the chief of police, you have the director of municipal service, and they come in, and, you know, they give updates and answer questions, and I think it's going to be a lot of extra work for seven people to, you know, to have to, should be a lot of extra information that I think is not going to work for them. I mean, there's going to be so much to take in, I mean, are they going to be able to get through it all? How long are the meetings going to be? How long are they going to take? I mean, they're going to take forever. I'm not sure. I just think all the extra work would be making. I'm not sure. I just think all the extra work could be, make it difficult.
Proceed.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I was reviewing this as, as well. So my thought would be, as a quick takeaway, maybe divide them out from public safety to our regular capital improvement projects, as a thought to help. My thought being that the public safety is a little bit more unique with, with its just, just being a different animal altogether compared to our stormwater and some of the other tax.
So just break it into, rather than three down to one, three down to two, if I'm hearing you correctly?
We'll just have the, the public safety oversight as one, then the, the others as one.
And then the others that are, public safety stays the same, if I'm hearing you correctly, and then combine the others together?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember, I can tell you're pondering, and it just, you just had that look like I wanted to say something.
Yeah, I like that better.
I wanted to give you the chance if you, if you wanted to.
I like that better.
Thank you. So you, you might consider that as an option, rather than going from three to two, one to three to two?
My concern is just overworking the committee. That's my main concern, and that stuff gets lost in the cracks, you know, that, that's my concern.
Okay.
That they'll just, you know, I don't wanna accuse anybody, but they'll just, there'll be so much information that maybe all the research won't get done.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any further information from you, Madam City Clerk?
No, so do we want a revision and just come back at another study session? I know Councilmember Steinmeier, you said you wanted to look at the foundational documentation for the oversight committee, so we can just bring it back to another study session. I don't think there's any rush, unless I'm mistaken, Mr. City Manager?
No, this was really a byproduct of the council's strategic planning session back on June the twenty-first. So we made that proposal, but there is no priority about this.
Councilmember, would that, would that satisfy your request?
That would be much appreciated, thank you.
Happy to do it. Anyone else have other further questions, comments, concerns?
So we have one more recommendation, and that's to dissolve the transportation policy committee.
Okay.
So we discussed this previously at the last study session. There's not a whole lot more to add to it. We have added a draft resolution to this agenda, if you've taken a look at that. Any comments on dissolving the transportation policy committee?
You know, we have a lot of bus riders in the city, and a lot of them live in my district, you know, I've heard from at least one of them, and you know, he doesn't like the idea of this. I don't know. It just, um, I mean, how often is the transportation committee meeting now anyway? Like, what are we, they really do, what are we, what's the agenda at this point?
They haven't met for, I'd say probably a few years now.
It's been, it's been a while.
Yeah, I mean, I think easily before the pandemic started.
Okay. I guess my concern, if we did need something from one, then they would be gone. That's all I have, thank you.
Any further discussions, comments, questions? Mr. City Manager, anything to wrap up?
Nothing further from me.
Okay.
Nothing from there.
And I don't see, there's no other discussion topics that I'm aware of, so with that, I'm gonna declare us adjourned. Thank you.